Morning, everyone. We're gonna get started. Um, members will take their seat. Our guests will retire behind the rail. And we will start our invocation. To give our invocation this morning, the Chair recognizes Pastor Vincent Corbin of Crown of Life Ministries of Christ. He is here today as the guest of Councilwoman Cindy Bass. I would ask all guests, visitors, and members to please rise.
I think I'm Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
How's everybody doing? And before I start, I want to say that, um, my wife Roxanne and I, um, find it a great honor to have been invited here today. And, um, and it's an honor and it's a great pleasure. And so at this time, we're gonna ask for all hearts and minds, um, to be, to just come together and we bow our heads. Dear Heavenly Father, in the name of Jesus, we collectively all gather here today, Lord God, to invoke your presence within these hallowed halls, Lord. And God, we ask you, Lord God, that, that, that as I stand here, that we lift up, um, the, our mayor, our city, and each and every council person, and their entire staffs before you, that you may do them, Lord, with your divine wisdom and your guidance. Lord, I think all of us thank you, Lord God, for, for allowing us another opportunity to, to, to express our commitment and our love to all those within these city walls, Lord. God, we thank you, Lord God, for, for, for these, your public servants, um, in here, Lord God. And we ask you that you give them the strength and you give them the, the endurance to be able to do the people's business. Precious God, um, we want you to go beyond just, just what their public services, Lord. But God, we want you to go into their private lives. And God, we want you to bless their families, bless their neighbors, bless their friends, bless their entire support group, Lord. And God, we want you to bless every council person, every, and the entire staff, Lord God, and just kind of bless them, Lord, in their homes, in their finances, bless their health. If they have any issues, Lord God, we ask you that you bring it, that you bring into concert to your divine will. And Lord, we want to thank you for all things, Lord God. And God, we ask you to even bless them with a peace that surpasses all understanding. And God, as we close, God, we ask you, Lord God, that you, that you just, uh, bless them with, 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 with all knowledge and that you preserve each and every one of them blameless and we commit them into your hands and that you keep them. In Jesus' precious name, we pray. Amen and amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Thank you very much. Counsel be at ease. Thank you very much. Thank you. Our next order of business is approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, April 21st, 2016. And the Chair recognizes Councilman Greenly.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, April 21st, 2016 be approved. Second.
Chair, second?
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved improperly second that the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, April 21st, 2016 stand approve. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and the Journal is approved. Next order of business is request for leave of absence. And the Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Council President. On behalf of the majority, there are no leaves of absence today.
Chair, thanks to gentlemen. Chair now recognizes Councilman O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the Republicans, there are no requests for leave of absence.
Thank you. Chair, thanks to gentlemen. At this time, I would like to dispense with the regular order of business and I would like to welcome and I'd like to thank everyone who has taken time out of their busy day to come down to witness their government in action. I hope that your stay here is an enjoyable one, so much so that you come back again. Again, thank you so much. At this time, the Chair recognizes Council members Reynolds Brown and Greenly, who present a resolution honoring Kathy Black. With Ms. Black and those accompanying her, please join the Councilmen at the podium. And joining the Council members, we have Councilman Green and Councilwoman Kiona Sanchez. And we also have Fred Wright.
Good morning to Council colleagues and guests. Uh, this morning, we are thrilled to lift up, celebrate, and salute a woman who has been a warrior and a soldier in the labor community. And, um, all of us hope to at some point do our goodwill and our good work and then to, to move on and reinvent ourselves, right Kathy?
I should be on your left. I'd like to be on the left.
So this morning, we are honoring Kathy Black on the occasion of her retirement from Asme District Council 47. Whereas Kathy Black was born and raised in a union family in North Philadelphia. And whereas Kathy graduated summa cum laude, Phi Beta Kappa with a bachelor's degree in sociology and labor studies from the University of Oregon in 1983. And whereas in 1988, Kathy moved home to Philadelphia and spent eight years representing New Jersey state employees in the Department of Health for a CWA local 1034 in Trenton, New Jersey. For two years, she served as the Governor's appointee to the New Jersey Public Employee OSHA, also known as OSHA Advisory Board. And?
Can't wait to see all the trouble she starts in her retirement. Whereas Kathy served as the elected president of the Philadelphia Chapter of CLU, the Coalition of Labor Union Women, from 1993 until April 2014. While CLU president, she served as a delegate to, from CLU to the Philadelphia Council of FLCIO and held a seat on their executive board. And whereas Kathy has served as a board member of Philopash, Philadelphia Area Project on Occupational Safety and Health for many years and was elected Chair for the second time in June 2011. She served on the Board and the PAC and then as Vice President for Finance for Philadelphia Now, the National Organization of Women, from 1999 until December 2015 and currently serves as Vice President of the Philadelphia Chapter of the American Civil Liberties Union. And whereas in February 2007, Kathy was elected as the sixth national co-convenor of the U.S. Labor Against the War, the anti-war organization within the labor movement founded in, in 2003 and in response to the U.S. invasion and occupation of Iraq.
Whereas Kathy previously served on the Boards of Americans for Democratic Action, Philadelphia Chapter, the Pennsylvania Consumer Action Network, Citizens for Consumer Justice, and the National Board of Citizen Action. And whereas Kathy chaired the Program Committee and served on a steering committee for the Unity 2000 March and Rally of 25,000 Protesters held in Philadelphia the day before the opening of the Republican National Convention on July 30th, 2000. And whereas Kathy has been a leader in major issue campaigns, including Labor Against Apartheid, the Living Wage Coalition, the All Women's Health Campaign, the Campaign for Contraceptive Coverage, the Movement to End the Wars and Occupations in Iraq and Afghanistan, and the Coalition for Healthy Families and Workplaces, which successfully advocated for passage of a City of Philadelphia ordinance requiring all employers to be provided paid sick leave to employees.
She also lives in a great neighborhood, by the way. Whereas Kathy has been honored by the Pennsylvania Consumer Action Network, Philadelphia Fight, United Way of Southeastern Pennsylvania, the Philadelphia NAACP 100th Anniversary Celebration, Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, and Philadelphia Now. In March 2015, Kathy was named a Philadelphia Woman of Moxie. Yeah, that works, sure. At an annual celebration of Women's History Month established by Councilwoman Blondell Reynolds Brown and received the Paul Robeson Lifetime Achievement Award from the Bread and Roses Community Fund. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia that Council does hereby honor Kathy Black on the occasion of her retirement from Asme District Council 47. Further resolved, that an engrossed copy of this resolution be presented to Kathy Black, Health and Safety Director of Asme District Council 47, as evidence of the sincere sentiments of this legislative body. Kathy, thank you for everything you've done over the years for the people who need it the most. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Ms. Black for remarks.
Thank you. Thank you so very much, everyone. Thanks especially first to Haji Malumian, who probably doesn't get enough thanks. He's the aide to Blondell Reynolds Brown, who did all the work to make this happen in his usual conscientious and efficient manner. Thank you, Council President Clark, my own district council rep, and all the members of council for this wonderful recognition. And especially thanks to Bill Greenly. Yes, he's my ward leader, we are neighbors too. And he's my paid sick days hero and the chief sponsor of this resolution. And to Blondell Reynolds Brown, whose idea it was to honor me today. Blondell and I have worked together for many years in many capacities and I'm very proud to have her as a friend and as a feminist representative in this body. Thanks to all my friends and colleagues in the audience from the mighty Philly Labor Movement, especially my home for 19 years, Asme District Council 47. Thanks for my colleagues for being here. President Fred Wright, Althea Jones, Don L. Martin. Who else is here? Barbara Dexter and all those in the audience. I see some NOW members out there too and, uh, members from my even longer affiliation with my sisters from CLU, the Coalition of Labor Union Women. We're the women's movement, the feminist conscience of the labor movement and proud to be so. You've got much more important work to do in this body and I don't want to take up your time. So I'm simply going to say what a wonderful gift it has been to spend my working life fighting to advance the rights of workers and women and for an end of war and militarism and to get paid union wages and benefits to do that work. These are issues that continue to drive my passions and for which I will continue to work unpaid. Yes, Maria, I will, still cause trouble in between my planned world travels, that is, now that my long union career has allowed me to retire with dignity and in relative comfort. No worker deserves any less. And so let's keep the movement alive and kicking until we have living wages, safe and healthy working conditions, and comfortable retirements for all. Thank you all very much.
Counsel be at ease. The Chair recognizes Councilman Toldenberger.
Thank you, Council President. I would like to acknowledge to my council colleagues, uh, the Pennsylvania Secretary for Agricultural, Russell Redding is here today. And I appreciate a, a warm welcome and reception for Secretary Redding. And, and he is here today because of two resolutions that are being put forward by myself and all members of council regarding agriculture.
Thank you, Councilman. And thank you, Mr. Secretary, for your great work. Appreciate it. This time, the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker, who recognized Delta Sigma Theta Sorority. With Leslie Cousins-Munn and those accompanying her, please join the Councilwoman at the podium.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you, Mr. President.
Morning.
It is my distinct honor and privilege, uh, to, uh, welcome the women of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, the Quaker City Alumni Chapter, along with the dynamic young people who are with them here today to be honored. Uh, I want to note for the record that, um, I thought I was at a great loss for the past 10 years in the Pennsylvania House of Representatives. I had the opportunity to welcome my sisters here from across the state via our Social Action Committee. And when they gathered in their red on Harrisburg in the Capitol in the House, they were sitting in the back of the chamber and the Speaker said, "Cherelle, who are all of those women in red?" And I said, "Mr. Speaker, those are my sisters." And, uh, it gives us a great honor. Councilwoman Reynolds Brown and I have the distinct honor and privilege of being a part of this organization that was founded on January 13th, 1913 on the campus of Howard University by 22 collegiate women. And I know when you think of a sorority, you usually think of women getting dressed up, having tea and crumpets. But I want you to know that what is different about these dynamic women and our founders is that our first act as a public sorority, our first act was our participation in the Women's Suffrage March in Washington, DC. And for those who didn't know, there were women of color there. They just didn't report it. With that being said, Mr. Mr. President, let me just note for, um, the record that this is a citation recognizing Delta Days at City Council and members of their local youth election and leadership advocates on the occasion of Delta Days and City Council. Whereas the Quaker City Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated was chartered in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania on October 17th, 1976 by 27 African-American educated women to proudly execute the organization's five-point programmatic thrust, which includes economic development, educational development, international awareness and involvement, physical and mental health, and political awareness and involvement. Over the past 40 years, this chapter has strategically expanded its membership to more than 150 local women working to build a more connected and informed community. And whereas members of the Quaker City Alumni Social Action Committee have dynamically continued in their foremothers footsteps to promote social and political activism by addressing voting rights, supporting voter education, and hosting numerous voter registration drives and voter phone banks, as well as advocating for adequate education funding, quality after-school programming, and access to early childhood education for all children. And?
Whereas members of the sorority's Social Action Committee have furthered their commitment to social and political engagement by empowering and encouraging student activism through the Election Ambassador Corps offered at Paul Robeson High School for Human Services, the completion of the Behind the Ballot badge by the Girl Scouts of the Chesapeake Bay Council Troop 309, and continued participation in Youth Leadership Day where students observe council members in action at Delta Days at City Council. And?
I came up from standing on the floor, colleagues. We know our place. And whereas 18 students from Paul Robeson High School for Human Services dedicated much of their free time to educating their peers and community on the importance of social and political activism by serving as election ambassadors under the Committee of Seventies Youth Engagement Program. They are Abdul Hakim Ali, Amir Slaughter, Almeda Dora Davis, Binta Gise, Deja Lynn Peller, Dominique Ann Hudson, Indigo Allen, Jai Waddell, Jamira Wally, Janu Ballard, Cara Destiny Jordan, Shadirina O. Blackman, Shamaan Nasir Levy, Tania Lee, Tacona Stuckey, Trelce Trotman, Timur Hall, and Taekwon Dorsey. We applaud your level, we applaud your level of activism and encourage you to continue in the footsteps of youth leaders who paved the road for you. And?
Whereas the Girl Scouts of the Chesapeake Bay Council Troop 309 rallied their scouts and set out on the mission to understand what it takes to operate campaigns, galvanize supporters, and change public policy. Elsie Davis, Manisha Nelson, Lena Underwood, Jessica Williams, and Deanna Wolfok, we salute your efforts and congratulate you on earning that prestigious badge. And?
Whereas the Deltas of Quaker City believe that it is never too early to begin grooming our future leaders, have made it their mission to introduce youth leadership training programs at their respective institutions, selecting well-deserving students who exemplify outstanding leadership skills and show a personal commitment to developing those skills. Anaya Knight, Samira Altitor, Storm Johnson, Andre Lu, Kyla Nixon, and John Ross Flowers. We commend you for taking this major step in social activism and connecting with local elected officials and we look forward to your future as selfless community leaders. And?
Sisterhood and the development of an army. Whereas the Quaker City Alumni Chapter continues to explore new avenues to collaborate with local organizations to tackle the issues that impact Philadelphia residents in an effort to effectively resolve today's challenges by implementing much-needed programming and advancing essential policy initiatives. And?
Therefore, by virtue of this citation, the Council of the City of Philadelphia proudly recognizes and honors the members of Delta Sigma Theta Sororities Incorporated's Quaker City Alumni Chapters, Social Action Committee, and Youth Election and Leadership Advocates on the occasion of the 13th year of Delta Days at City Council. We extend our sincere gratitude for your commitment to social and political engagement and your dedication to blazing a trail for our future advocates and leaders.
Chair recognizes Ms. Cousins-Munn for remarks.
Yes, good morning.
Morning.
My name is Leslie Cousins-Munn. I am the President of the Quaker City Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority. We want to thank the council members for support of the Delta Youth Day at City Council. We want to thank, um, for the 12th year, 13th year, actually. 10 years ago, our chapter changed the name and focus of the Delta Day at Philadelphia City Council to highlight the youth of Philadelphia. Today, we celebrate the council's commitment to the youth of the city. It's important that young people in our city see how issues facing our communities are discussed and researched. It's important that the young witness how adults handle and make laws that affect them and their communities. To understand that no one community is better or receives more services, but how laws celebrate the varieties of cultures, traditions, maintain the safety and self-worth of all of its citizens. Delta Sigma Theta Sorority was established and incorporated on January 13th, 1913. She quickly established herself in social action by two weeks later participating in the marching in the Women's Suffrage March in 1913. Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Quaker City Alumni Chapter was chartered on October 17th, 1976. This October, Quaker City will have left her mark and impact on the community throughout the Philadelphia with programs that are meant to make the lives of its citizens better. Toy Library, which is one of the projects QCA developed, moved on to include Delta Academy, Delta Gims, a program that works with youth female girls to prepare them for positive experiences at school, address youth issues, and to move toward continuing their education at a college level. The QCA Physical and Mental Health Program annually held in North Philadelphia is making a sufficient difference for the president, residents of that community. The QCA Social Action Committee has presence during its annual December dessert hour, topics such as aging gracefully, which not only discuss laws and services for our aging population, but the services that their caregiver can utilize to make sure that their loved ones are comfortable in their older years. The committee has held forums that allow citizens to discuss the healthcare law as well as join with the state senators to find sign-up locations. Our members assisted a large population in signing up for some form of healthcare, many for the first time in their lives. Twice a year throughout the city of Philadelphia, our members register citizens voting. Voting is a citizen fundamental right. We visit the state Capitol in Harrisburg, PA, and Washington, DC to solicit our representatives to support and fund education from K-12 grades to entrance into two-to-four-year colleges and universities. Again, on behalf of the Quaker City Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Incorporated, we thank you for inviting us and having us here today. I'd like to... I'd like to... And now, I'm going to introduce Patricia Alfred, our Social Action Chair.
Good morning.
Morning.
Once again, I want to thank you. I've been coming here for a number of years. I'm a charter member of Quaker City Alumni Chapter, and it's just phenomenal support that we get from Philadelphia City Council. But we'd like to make some special presentations this morning. The first one... The first one to I saw, Aurora, and your committee person, Sherrell Parker, for your dedication in assisting and supporting the citizens of the city of Philadelphia and the Quaker City Alumni Chapter, April 28th, 2016. Mrs. Leslie Cousins-Mann, chapter president.
Thank you. Thank you. You're welcome.
The next award probably is a little surprise, but this councilwoman has supported us every since we've been coming, and we'd like to have Councilwoman Janie Blackwell, please come forward.
Thank you. Stand up for her as well.
Again, it honors Councilwoman Janie Blackwell for your dedication and assistance in supporting the citizens of the city of Philadelphia. We went to college together. It's been a long time. You've been doing this for a long time.
Thanks.
And the Quaker City Alumni Chapter, thank you very, very much for all your work that you do in the communities.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm honored. Thank you.
Thank you. That's it. Thank you, Councilordees. All right. Thank you. Before having our next and last presentation, I would like this time to recognize a former member of the City Council family and soon to be a new member of the General Assembly family, our good friend, Morgan Seefus. Yeah. And at this time, I'd like to recognize Councilwoman Kiona Sanchez.
Thank you, Council President. I want to ask my visiting students from Frankfurt Friends to please stand up. A few months ago, I was visiting the school as we were talking about what would be some new learning space the city awarded over to Frankfurt Friends of some land, and they will be expanding. And the students, at that time, I invited them to come to City Council. So I want to recognize the teachers, Jonathan Clifton and Lisa Clapper, for bringing the students. As part of their visit today, they wrote some essays to give me their opinions on some of the budget proposals, including the soda tax. Just want to quickly read a couple of what I believe to be some very thoughtful thinking on the young people. One of the cons about this law is that you're having poor people lose money because research shows that they buy more soda than other people. However, and I'm paraphrasing, I have thought about this, and my opinion is that, on the whole, it's a good tax. Lita Porter writes, "I realize that if we do have to pay an extra three cents per ounce for soda, it will increase grocery bills for families that least can afford it, like lower-income and poor families. However, I think it should pass because everyone should have a good education." Let it be known that young people are watching us and that they too have opinions and sometimes are more sensible than the adults in the room. So I want to thank them for coming down and have them enjoy their day as they visit City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you. Where are you? Stand up. Thank you, Councilwoman. At this time, the Chair recognizes Councilman O., who presented a resolution recognizing Philly Tech Week. With Christopher Wink, and those accompanying him, please join the councilmen at the podium. And joining Councilman O., we also have Councilman Kenyatta Johnson, Councilman Bobby Heenan, Councilman Alan Dom, and Councilwoman Helen Gim.
Thank you very much, Council President, as everyone gathers...
And Councilman Brian O'Neill.
Oops. I'd like to just say that I'm always delighted about this year, whoever's presenting this particular resolution, because while our history is our roots and shows where we've been in our substance, but technology represents our creativity, our innovation, and our future. And we're so grateful to have a lot of folks in our city, growing every day, more and more, innovating, creating things right here in our city. And so, one of the organizations, Technically Philly, has established our annual Philly Tech Week. And so, this resolution recognizes and proclaims the week of April 29th, 2016 to May 7th, 2016 as the sixth annual Philly Tech Week, presented by Comcast and honoring the broad and vibrant Philadelphia technology community.
Whereas, the Philadelphia technology, innovation, and creative communities are again coming together to celebrate their importance to the region's economy, culture, and future. And whereas, the Philadelphia technology community, with leadership from the local technology news organization Technically Philly, has again organized a series of 140 events around technology and innovation in Philadelphia called Philly Tech Week, scheduled from April 29th, 2016 to May 7th, 2016.
Whereas, Philly Tech Week will be kicked off with an outdoor arcade night at Dilworth Park. The following events will be hosted throughout the city, organized by one-day conferences focused on six-track themes: creative, civic, business, access, media, and development. The highlighted events include a mayor tech town hall and two forums about the growth and development of Philadelphia's health and science community, and a Philadelphia Tech Week signature event at the Urban Building.
And... Whereas, the title sponsor is no surprise Comcast, and the collaboration sponsor is University of Pennsylvania. Whereas, the dev-track sponsors are Chariot Solutions, Meet Me, Linode, Jarvis Innovations, and Susquehanna International Group, LLP. The creative track sponsors are Tonic Design Company and Urban Engineering.
Whereas, the civic track sponsors are the Children's Hospital of Philadelphia and Ben Franklin Technology Partners of Southeastern Pennsylvania. The media track sponsors are CapTech, Cashman &amp; Associates, Philadelphia University, and Oneseo.com. The business track sponsors are Saul Ewing, LLP, Temple University Science Center, and Morgan Lewis.
Whereas, Philly Tech Week 2015, the fifth annual event, was an event of great importance to the city's technology and innovation community. More than 25,000 people attended over 150 events that were organized by 300 partners. The continuation of Philly Tech Week as an annual celebration and gathering of influencers in the technology and innovation sphere furthers Philadelphia's reputation as an emerging East Coast technology hub. Now, for be it...
Resolved, I'm sorry, resolved by the Council of the City of Philadelphia that it hereby declares the week of April 29th, 2016 to May 7th, 2016 as the sixth annual Philly Tech Week, presented by Comcast, encourages all Philadelphians to participate in this series of scheduled events and conversations around technology and innovation, and commends the broad and vibrant Philadelphia technology community for creating jobs, increasing community, and remaining committed to the betterment of our city. Further, resolve that an engrossed copy of the resolution be presented to representatives of Philly Tech Week as evidence of the sincere sentiments of this legislative body. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Mr. Wink for remarks.
Thank you so much. Thank you all. Thank you, Council President Clark. Thank you, Councilman O. for introducing, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Heenan, Councilwoman Gim, yeah, got it, Councilwoman Dom, and Councilman O'Neill. Thank you all so much for the endorsement. Two things that I wanted to say quickly. One, technology has a bad reputation of being seen as isolating, and it's not. We, I think we're up to at least half of the council manic districts have Philly Tech Week events in this year. It's something that our title sponsor Comcast, that we as a technology news site care a lot about. This is not isolating. This has to be inclusive. There are software events around education, around food, and access in addition to surging technology companies that hire people. This is both about economic development and opportunity for everyone. An example would be the Coded by Kids program, someone whom we report on plenty, organizing events in a handful of rec centers around the city so residents can understand how they can access this community. Events at 58th and Chester and 22nd and Cecil Beach, in addition to Center City Corridor. We care a lot about making this more accessible to as many people as we can, and I hope and ask all of council, let's continue to make technology innovation more accessible than it ever can be. That's what I think has to happen. And my second ask is, we have rain looming tomorrow for our kickoff, so anything at all that can happen in this esteemed chamber to persuade that, I would much appreciate it. Five years running, we've had rain in our kickoff, so if we could end that, it would be much appreciated. We'll be at Dilworth Park, we'll have several thousand people bearing the rain, no matter what, I'm sure. By the end of today, we'll decide if we are definitely going ahead tomorrow or doing it Saturday. So think of us. And that closing thought on that kickoff, there are no walls, which is very much by design. We do that at Dilworth Park. We have kids come from all parts of the neighborhood, all parts of our city, to play with games built locally. So if you have a student, a child, who likes to use technology but thinks it's only built far away, understand that it is built here in Philadelphia, and I thank you all for acknowledging that this work is being done. Thanks for the opportunity. We're going to give Philly Tech Week t-shirts to everyone in council. We'll get them over to you in addition to Philly Tech Week print magazines, so you can help spread the word. Thank you so much. Thanks to the Comcast, University of Pennsylvania, and all of you for helping make this happen. I'll see you during Philly Tech Week this year. Thank you.
All right.
City Council President, five years in a row running, next year, I'm going to distribute Philly Tech Week umbrellas.
All right. All right. Thank you. Councilordees. Thank you. Thank you very much. The next order of business is communications, and the Chair requests that the Sergeant of Arms delivers the messages from the mayor to the chief clerk. Mr. Decker, please read those messages.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, pursuant to Sections 4604 and 2307 of the Home Rule Charter, I am today transmitting to the Council the recommendation of the City Planning Commission on the following bills. Bill number is 160222, 160223, 160227, 160228, 160246, 160271, 160272, 160275, 160276, 160277, 160300, and 160302. And I am pleased to advise you that on April 26, 2016, I signed all the bills which were passed by council at its session on April 14, 2016. And I am submitting herewith to the consideration of your honorable body, an ordinance amending Section 2 of an ordinance, Bill Number 090120, and titled an ordinance authorizing the revision of lines and grades in a portion of City Plan numbers 107 and 130 by striking from the city plan and vacating the legally open portions of 47th Street from Fairmount Avenue to Brown Street by extending the period for compliance with the terms and conditions stated therein. And an ordinance amending Chapter 17, 1300, of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Philadelphia 21st Century Minimum Wage and Benefit Standard" to revise the benefits required to be provided in connection with application of the Philadelphia 21st Century Minimum Wage Standard. And an ordinance authorizing the Public Property Commissioner to lease to the Rosemary Montagno Senior Center the premises located at 12601 Townsend Road, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Decker. Do you have any additional messages?
I have none, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. We now recognize Councilman Jones.
We will now recognize Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to acknowledge some fine students that have come down to observe us today from St. Joseph's University. Alexandra Hada, a political science major, Sarah Snowden, a junior political science major, Cheryl Rosinski, a senior in business administration, Matthew Zanowick, a poli sci major, and Kathleen Deeds, a senior international business major, and Tess Hill, a sophomore who is also a political science major. Would you join us in welcoming her?[637.67][637.67](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Councilman. You're welcome. Thank you. The next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions, and the chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Good morning, Mr. President. This morning I have one bill and three privileged resolutions, and one resolution on your behalf.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
An ordinance amending Chapter 16, 300, of the Philadelphia Code, entitled "Maintenance and Supervision to Require Installation of LED Lighting in Connection with Large City Public Works Projects."
Bill will be referred to committee.
And a non-privileged resolution approving the Office of Economic Opportunity Registry in compliance with provisions of Chapter 17, 1503, Subparagraph 1, Subparagraph A of the Philadelphia Code pursuant to section of the Home Rule Charter.
And that resolution will be on next week's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution congratulating Barbara Ortiz Howard for leading the Local Women on 20s campaign to place a woman on the $20 bill.
And this week's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution commending the Rising Queens on their third mentoring weekend entitled "Young Ladies on the Rise: Marvelous Mothers Edition."
This week's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution honoring the memory and celebrating the life of Barbara Daniel Cox.
And that will also be on this week's final passage calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today I introduce one bill, albeit it's the third time, and one non-privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
An ordinance amending Section 2 of an ordinance, Bill Number 090120, approved April 15, 2009, entitled "An Ordinance Authorizing the Revision of Lines and Grades in a Portion of City Plan Numbers 107 and 307, 130," by striking from the city plan and vacating the legally open portions of 47th Street from Fairmount Avenue to Brown Street.
That bill will be referred to committee.
And a non-privileged resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration Deeds conveying conditional fees simple titled to the city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements around, situated in the 24th Ward of the City of Philadelphia.
And that will be on next week's final passage calendar. The chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I offer one bill on behalf of the administration.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance amending Chapter 17, 1300, of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Philadelphia 21st Century Minimum Wage and Benefit Standard," to revise the benefits required to be provided in connection with the, with application of the Philadelphia 21st Century Minimum Wage Standard.
That bill will be referred to committee. And the chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Council President. Today I offer one bill.
Thank you, Councilman.
An ordinance amending Subcodes A and PM of Title 4 of the Philadelphia Code, the Philadelphia Administrative Code, and the Philadelphia Property Maintenance Code, by establishing a separate offense for certain chronic, non-compliant violators of the Property Maintenance Code.
And that bill will be referred to committee. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no bills or resolutions today.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Council President, I have two privileged resolutions and one non-privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
A privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia City Council Committee on Transportation and Public Utilities to hold hearings examining the opportunities presented by regular open-streets events in the City of Philadelphia.
And that will be on this week's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution authorizing the Philadelphia City Council Committee on Legislative Oversight to hold hearings examining the state of the Philadelphia Housing Development Corporation's basic systems repair program and extensive backlog.
That will also be on this week's final passage calendar.
And a non-privileged resolution calling on the Pennsylvania State Legislature to increase the City of Philadelphia's income limit guidelines for the Senior Citizen Property Tax Relief Program.
And that will be on next week's final passage calendar. The chair recognizes Councilwoman Keon Stansfield.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two privileged resolutions.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A privileged resolution recognizing and observing May 2 through May 6, 2016, as Construction Safety Week in the City of Philadelphia.
That will be on this week's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing and honoring the seven Philadelphia school principals who received the 2016 Lindback Award for distinguished principal leadership.
This week's final passage calendar, and the chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. I have one non-privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilman.
A non-privileged resolution commending the Treasury Department of the United States for their announced plan to feature prominent Americans on future currency notes, including Harriet Tubman, Lucretia Mott, Sojourner Truth, Susan B. Anthony, Elizabeth Cady Stanton, Alice Paul, Eleanor Roosevelt, Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., and Marian Anderson, designed with tactile features directed to those with a visual impairment.
That will be on next week's final passage calendar. And the chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have one privileged resolution.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A privileged resolution honoring the life and mourning the loss of Samuel Staton, Sr.
That will be on this week's final passage calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Morning, Council President. Today I have one privileged resolution sponsored by all members of council.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privileged resolution recognizing and proclaiming the week of May 1 through May 7 as Public Service Recognition Week in the City of Philadelphia, and celebrating all the men and women who have answered the call to serve our city and our communities as government employees.
And that will be on this week's final passage calendar. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Kim.
Good morning, Mr. President. I have two privileged resolutions. One, May Day Resolution sponsored by Councilmembers Blackwell, Jones, Heenan, and Taubenberger, and the other for nurses, co-sponsored by Councilmembers Squilla, Bass, and Taubenberger. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
A privileged resolution recognizing and designating May 1, 2016, as International Workers' Day, a day to honor and celebrate the manifold achievements of workers and the historical and continuing struggle of labor movements for justice and fair working conditions.
This week's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing and designating May 6 through May 12, 2016, as Nurses' Week in the City of Philadelphia, to honor the critical work nurses do each day to care for the health and well-being of Philadelphians of all ages.
This week's final passage calendar. Chair now recognizes Councilman Taubenberger.
Good morning, Council President and colleagues. I have two non-privileged resolutions sponsored by all members of council.
Thank you. Thanks, Councilman.
A privileged resolution authorizing the Commerce and Economic Development Committee to hold public hearings on vertical farming, hydroponic farming, and aquaponic systems in Philadelphia.
That will be on this week's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution authorizing the Committee on, on the environment to hold public hearings on urban agriculture in Philadelphia.
And that resolution will also be on this week's final passage calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman O'Neil.
Thank you, Mr. President, for one bill.
Thanks, Councilman.
An ordinance authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property on behalf of the City of Philadelphia to lease to the Rosemary Montagno Senior Center, the premises located at 12601 Townsend Road.
That bill will be referred to the appropriate committee. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer on behalf of Councilman Mark Squilla, two bills.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
An ordinance authorizing David Q for the Moral Arts, Moral Arts Program to install on and maintain a wall-mounted art display at 1327 through 29 South Street.
Referred to committee.
And an ordinance legalizing an existing external steel stairs to the second floor of 2654 South Combeck Street.
Referred to committee. Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I offer two privileged resolutions and two bills.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
An ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Elkin Street, Onley Avenue, 20th Street, Bellfield Avenue, and Worcester Street.
Referred to committee.
And an ordinance amending Title 17 of the Philadelphia Code entitled "Contracts and Procurement by Adding Provisions Requiring the City Contractors to Pay Subcontractors Promptly," and setting forth an alternative process for prompt payment.
Referred to committee.
And a privileged resolution authorizing Council's Committee on Parks Recreation and Cultural Affairs to hold public hearings for applicants seeking nomination to serve on the Commission on Parks and Recreation, and further authorizing the committee to recommend for Council's consideration nominations to be forwarded to the mayor.
This week's final passage calendar.
And a privileged resolution recognizing and honoring Opera Philadelphia on their prestigious nomination as the best opera company at the 2016 International Opera Awards.
And that will also be on this week's final passage calendar. Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. I offer one privileged resolution co-sponsored by Councilmembers Cindy Bass and Blondell Reynolds-Brown.
Thank you, Councilman.
A privileged resolution encouraging all Philadelphians to participate in the 11th National Prescription Drug Takeback Day on April 30, 2016, as a means of preventing prescription drug abuse.
And that will be on this week's final passage calendar. That concludes our introduction of bills and resolutions, and we will now have report from committee. Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee for a report from the Committee on Rules.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Committee on Rules reports 12 bills with a favorable recommendation and one bill without recommendation.
Thank you. And Mr. Decker, please read that report.
To the President and members of the Council of the City of Philadelphia, the Committee on Rules, which is referred to Bill Number 16006, entitled "An Ordinance to Amend the Philadelphia Zoning Maps by Changing the Zoning Designations of Certain Areas of Land Located Within an Area Bound by Ridge Avenue, 16th Street, Agnes Street, 15th Street, Poplar Street, Carlisle Street, and Brown Street." And Bill Number 160073, entitled "An Ordinance Amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code Entitled 'Zoning and Planning' by Adding a New Subsection Entitled 'Rittenhouse Square Residential Area.'" And Bill Number 160096, entitled "An Ordinance to Amend Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code Entitled 'Zoning and Planning' by Establishing the Broad Street Area Mid-South Within the Center City Overlay District." And Bill Number 160098, entitled "An Ordinance to Amend the Philadelphia Zoning Maps by Changing the Zoning Designations of Certain Areas of Land Located Within an Area Bound by Cypress Street, Watch Street, Pine Street, and Broad Street." And Bill Number 160135, entitled "An Ordinance to Amend the Philadelphia Zoning Maps by Changing the Zoning Designations of Certain Areas of Land Located Within an Area Bound by Westmoreland Street, Front Street, Hope Street, and Allegheny Avenue." And Bill Number 160198, entitled "An Ordinance to Amend the Philadelphia Zoning Maps by Changing the Zoning Designations of Certain Areas of Land Located Within an Area Bound by Hamilton Street, 15th Street, Calle Hill Street, and 16th Street." And Bill Number 160221, entitled "An Ordinance Authorizing the Philadelphia Housing Authority to Acquire by Condemnation Fee Simple Title to Certain City Properties Located in the Vicinity of 19th Street to the East, 28th Street to the West, Cecilby Moore Avenue to the North, and College Avenue to the South." And Bill Number 160222, entitled "An Ordinance to Amend the Philadelphia Zoning Maps by Changing the Zoning Designations of Certain Areas of Land Located Within an Area Bound by Gerard Avenue, 6th Street, Poplar Street, and 7th Street." And Bill Number 160227, entitled "An Ordinance Amending Section 14, 600, of the Philadelphia Code, and Settle Use Regulations by Modifying the Household Living Uses Allowed in the CMX3 District." And Bill Number 160228, entitled "An Ordinance to Amend the Philadelphia Zoning Maps by Changing the Zoning Designations of Certain Areas of Land Located Within an Area Bound by Green Street, 2nd Street, Spring Garden Street, and 3rd Street." And Bill Number 160246, entitled "An Ordinance to Amend the Philadelphia Zoning Maps by Changing the Zoning Designations of Certain Areas of Land Located Within an Area Bound by 28th Street, Thompson Street, 25th Street, North College Avenue, West College Avenue, and Gerard Avenue." And Bill Number 160271, entitled "An Ordinance to Amend the Philadelphia Zoning Maps by Changing the Zoning Designations of Certain Areas of Land Located Within an Area Bound by 31st Street, Master Street, 32nd Street, and Jefferson Street," further to approve the master plan for the Brewery Town Residential Mixed-Use District by adding the site bounded by 31st Street, Master Street, 32nd Street, and Jefferson Street to the Brewery Town Residential Mixed-Use District, and approving various construction projects. Respectfully reports that is considered and amended the same and returns the attached bills to council with a favorable recommendation. And Bill Number 160138, entitled "An Ordinance Amending Various Provisions of the Philadelphia Code, Including Title 4 of the Philadelphia Building, Construction, and Occupancy Code, Title 9, Regulation of Businesses, Trades, and Professions, and Title 14, Zoning and Planning," to preclude issuance of certain licenses and permits to any applicant who is in link with the payments owed to the city. Respectfully reports that is considered the same and returns the attached bill to council with no recommendation.
Thank you. Chair again recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended, so I ask to permit first reading this day of the 13 bills that were just read into the record by the clerk.
Thank you. It has been moved, and property second, the council's, the rules of council be suspended, so I ask to permit first reading this day of Bills Number 16006, 160073, 160096, 160098, 160135, 160138, 160198, 160221, 160222, 160227, 160228, 160246, and 160271. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, ayes have it, and these bills will be placed on our first reading calendar for today. That concludes our reports on committee. We will now have our consideration of the calendar. And note that the bill just reported on committee was suspension of the rules that will have deemed to have had a first reading. They will be on our second reading and final passes at our next session of council. As there are no additional bills on the first reading, the chair recognizes Councilman Heenan for the purpose of calling up resolutions and bills on the second reading and final passes calendar.
Thank you, Council President. The following bills and resolutions are being called up for a second final, second reading and final passage calendars today. 160287, 160337, 160338, 160339, 160341, 160342, 160075, and 160130. All other resolutions and bills are being held.
Thank you, Councilmen. Before voting on these bills or resolutions on the final passage calendar today, we will have our public comment session. The public comment session will go as follows. If you are interested in testifying on a bill or resolution that is on the final passage, if you have not already done so, I'd ask that you sign up to the table to my left. When your name is called, you will go to the podium in the middle of the council chambers. There's a device on that podium. When the light turns green, it will be your time to speak. When the light turns yellow, you will have 30 seconds to conclude your remarks, and when the light turns red, we'd ask that you please adhere to the guidelines to conclude your remarks. You will be given three minutes to testify. Thank you very much for your cooperation. Mr. Decker, please call the first name.
Joe Dennehall, commenting on 160256, 160337, 160338, 160339, 160341, 160342, and 160007.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir. Evidently, you love my company. Speaking for a moratorium, for the moratorium at the Sheriff's Department against any use of the Redevelopment Authority and/or land bank, this council's total disregard for the last nine months of public notice of alleged possible illegal and unconstitutional activities at the RDA and the land bank is egregious and shows a total disregard for the suffrage of others. Though the moratorium, mortgage foreclosures at the Sheriff's Department is a start, it does not go far enough. Improper de-transfers creates fraudulent documents. This is not allowed under federal, state, and local laws. This legislative body is aiding this abomination. I call council's attention to Federal Law 42 USC 1982, 1983, 1985, and 1986, previously read in open council session. No action on the various issues about 1038 West Wyoming and the other properties involved leave me without my home, while government is prepared to give up to $100 million to a developer to build on top of my stolen home. Investigation of the RDA and the land bank is required in this matter, lest we forget that Paul Robeson has quoted that the... that Paul Robeson has quoted that the answer to injustice is not to silence the critters, but to end the injustice. This council needs act and needs to investigate the RDA and the Land Bank for these egregious behaviors, or they themselves are guilty of aiding and abetting this criminal behavior. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony.
Johnny Young.
Not moving. All right, thank you.
Joan Stern. Ali Razak.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. Council President Clark and members of council, my name is Joan N. Stern. I'm a resident of the City of Philadelphia and a public finance lawyer who has worked with the city over the years on bond and finance matters. I'm here to speak in support of Resolution One Six Oh Two Eight Seven, and I commend Councilwoman Parker and Councilwoman Gimm for introducing it. If council adopts this resolution, as I hope you will, council will join a host of organizations representing large issuers of municipal bonds, such as the Government Finance Officers Association, the National Association of State Treasurers, the League of Cities, in urging the Senate to take up H.R. twenty-two oh eight and pass it so that high-quality municipal bonds, such as those issued by the city, will continue to be high-quality liquid assets in which large banks can invest for purposes of liquidity and collateral. This is a significant market for the city's bonds. It provides an important segment of the market to purchase the city's bonds in a cost-effective way. I hope that the council will make the city one of the supporters of maintaining the role of the city's bonds in this high-quality liquid asset classification so that the city can continue to benefit from an enhanced and improved market for its own bonds. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony.
Ali Razak.
Thank the city council for letting me speak here on, to the privileged resolution recognizing, recognizing and designating my first as International Workers' Day and honoring workers and laborers like me and others. My day is the day where a resolution has stated and passed that eight hours should be legally constituted for a concerted day of work. I would like to request city council to support our amendments of S.P. nine eighty-four. S.P. nine eighty-four is for transportation workers, for taxi drivers, for limousine drivers, and for the common carrier. We need a support of city council in that amendments regarding the minimum living wage, regarding the issues of that we should have a right to collective bargaining, we should have a right for becoming a union. And I would also like to request city council to ask Mayor Jim Kenny to uphold the law against the corporate like Uber and Lyft, who is actually violating all these labor, ADA, and anti-business laws. So, that's all.
Thank you for your testimony, sir.
Tom Earl.
Good morning, Council President and members of city council. My name's Tom Earl. I'm the CEO of Liberty Resources, which is the center for independent living in Philadelphia, and serves our many city residents who have physical disabilities. And we're here to voice our full support for the resolution honoring May first as May Day and International Workers' Day for the many thousands of home care workers who help our seniors and people with disabilities live independently in the community. And also in full support of taxi drivers, limo drivers, Uber Black drivers, who provide reliable, accessible transportation service to our many seniors and people with disabilities throughout the city. And we hope that we can count on the leadership of city council, of council president and Mayor Kenny, in making sure that any state legislation that impacts the operation of transportation in Philadelphia has the full input of Philadelphia legislators, not only state representatives and state senators, but also members of city council, council president Clark, and the mayor, to make sure that any law passed by the state for Philadelphia makes sure that transportation is provided to people with disabilities, including Uber, X, and Lyft, and that we work together with the Parking Authority, Councilman Al Taubinberger, David O., Helen Gimm, and many others who have been sensitive and supportive of these issues. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your testimony.
There are no other speakers on the public comment list, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. We will now move to our calendar. And, Mr. Decker, can you please read the title of One Six Oh Two Eight Seven?
A resolution calling upon the United States Senate to approve H.R. two-two oh nine, recently approved on February one, two thousand sixteen, by the House of Representatives, to require the appropriate federal banking agencies to treat certain municipal obligations as Level Two A liquid assets by amending the rule entitled Liquidity Coverage Ratio, Liquidity Risk Measurement Standards, Final Rule.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption and wish to be recognized to make comments when you deem appropriate.
Then, you want to speak?
Yes.
Yeah, please go now.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. Let me just take this opportunity to thank Councilwoman Gimm for serving as the chief co-sponsor. And I want to thank Joan Stern, who many of us remember, particularly those who were around when PICA was created, and her involvement there, and also our city treasurer, Rashia Johnson, for lending her voice to this very important issue. It's not one, Mr. President, that's pretty sexy and is getting a lot of ink in newspapers, but for those who, and we all were paying attention to the city's five-year plan and our significantly low fund balance, this legislation, if it is not passed in the U.S. Senate, could have a long-term fiscal impact on the City of Philadelphia's finances. The municipal bond, a municipal bond is just as liquid as a corporate bond, but the federal rule will allow banks to hold large quantities of corporate bonds and restrict them from holding any significant amount of municipal bonds. And this idea that Joan Stern adequately referenced as the value of high-quality liquid assets and not referring to municipal bonds as high-quality liquid assets is really interesting thinking about the two thousand and eight crash, because when corporate bonds became junk bonds, it was municipal bonds that literally held on to the value. So today, it is our hope that this council will lend its voice to this issue and encourage our Pennsylvania delegation and the U.S. Senate to work in a bipartisan effort to pass this legislation. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselwoman. It's been moved in property second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, and Resolution One Six Oh Two Eight Seven has been adopted. Mr. Decker, One Six Oh Three Three Seven?
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of certain properties located in the Fifth Council-Mannick District in accordance with terms of Chapter sixteen seven hundred of the Philadelphia Code.
Chair recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, and Resolution One Six Oh Three Thirty Seven is adopted. Mr. Decker, One Six Oh Three Thirty Eight?
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority to dispose of certain properties located in the Fifth Council-Mannick District that will be transferred by the city to the authority by conveyance of such properties to the Philadelphia Land Bank.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Greenlee.
Move the adoption of the resolution, Mr. President.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, and Resolution One Six Oh Three Thirty Eight is adopted. Mr. Decker, One Six Oh Three Thirty Nine?
A resolution approving the assignment, assumption, and consent agreement of the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority for the redevelopment and urban renewal of portions of the Center City redevelopment area designated as Parcel One A, Parcel One B, Parcel One C, Parcel One D, Parcel One E, and Parcel One F, and identified as certain air rights of portions within twenty twenty-five through twenty-nine Chestnut Street.
One more time, we recognize Councilman Greenlee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, and Resolution One Six Oh Three Thirty Nine is adopted. Mr. Decker, One Six Oh Three Forty One?
A resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of certain properties located in the Seventh Council-Mannick District in accordance with terms of Chapter sixteen seven hundred of the Philadelphia Code.
And the chair recognizes Councilwoman Kiona Sanchez.
Move for the adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it, and Resolution One Six Oh Three Forty One is adopted. Mr. Decker, One Six Oh Three Forty Two?
A resolution authorizing the Commissioner of Public Property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority without consideration of deeds conveying additional fees some titled certain city on lots of pieces of ground with the buildings and improvements they're on, situated in the twenty-fifth ward of the City of Philadelphia.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Kiona Sanchez.
I move for its adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it. Resolution One Six Oh Three Forty Two is adopted. Mr. Decker, One Six Oh Oh Seven Five?
An ordinance amending Title Four, the Philadelphia Code entitled the Philadelphia Building, Construction, and Occupancy Code by amending Subcode A, the Philadelphia Administrative Code, providing further posting and public notice of the demolition of structures and making related changes.
This bill has been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Dom, Councilman Green, Councilman Greenlee, Councilwoman Gimm, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman O'Neil, Councilman O., Councilwoman Parker, Councilwoman Karuna Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilman Taubinberger, Council President Clark.
All right, ayes are seventeen and ayes are zero. Majority of members present voting in affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, One Six Oh One Three Oh.
An ordinance amending Title Four, the Philadelphia Code entitled the Philadelphia Building, Construction, and Occupancy Code by amending Subcode B, the Philadelphia Building Code, and thus amending the PA Uniform Construction Code for Philadelphia to add sections requiring contractors, design professionals, and developers to add additional fire-resistant material to structures containing truss construction and other light frame construction.
This bill has also been heard on two separate days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker, call the roll.
Councilwoman Bass, Councilwoman Blackwell, Councilman Dom, Councilman Green, Councilman Greenlee, Councilwoman Gimm, Councilman Heenan, Councilman Johnson, Councilman Jones, Councilman O'Neil, Councilman O., Councilwoman Parker, Councilwoman Karuna Sanchez, Councilwoman Reynolds Brown, Councilman Squilla, Councilman Taubinberger, Council President Clark.
All right, ayes are seventeen and ayes are zero. Majority of members present voting in affirmative, the bill passes. Mr. Decker, do you have any additional resolutions?
A resolution congratulating Barbara Ortiz Howard for leading the Local Women on Twenties Campaign to place a woman on the twenty-dollar bill introduced by Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution commending the rising queens on their third mentoring weekend entitled Young Ladies on the Rise Marvelous Mothers Edition, introduced by Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring the memory and celebrating the life of Barbara Daniel Cox, introduced by Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Yes, Mr. President. I move for the adoption, and I would appreciate it if we could do that with a standing vote for this extraordinary, exceptional service.
Yes, please stand. It's been moved in property second. We shall register by standing vote. That resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia City Council Committee on Transportation and Public Utilities to hold hearings examining the opportunities presented by regular open streets events in the City of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilman Johnson.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Council President, I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia City Council Committee on Legislative Oversight to hold hearings examining the state of the Philadelphia Housing Development Corporation's Basic Systems Repair Program and its extensive backlog, introduced by Councilman Johnson.
Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and observing May second through May sixth, two thousand sixteen, as Construction Safety Week in the City of Philadelphia, introduced by Councilwoman Karuna Sanchez.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Karuna Sanchez.
Thank you. I move for its adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? All in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring the seven Philadelphia school principals who received the two thousand sixteen Lindback Award for distinguished principal leadership, introduced by Councilwoman Karuna Sanchez.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Karuna Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for its adoption.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution honoring the life and mourning the loss of Samuel Stateen Senior, introduced by Councilwoman Parker.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. This resolution, which is sponsored by yourself and all members of council, I would move for the adoption and ask for a standing vote, and I'll reserve my comments, Mr. President, until we make remarks at the end, because I'm sure all members of council would like to do the same.
Thank you, Counselwoman. We shall register our votes by standing vote. That resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and proclaiming the week of May first through May seventh as Public Service Recognition Week in the City of Philadelphia and celebrating all the men and women who have answered the call to serve our city and our communities as government employees, introduced by Councilman Dom.
Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and designating May one, two thousand sixteen, as International Workers' Day, a day to honor and celebrate the manifold achievements of workers and the historical and continuing struggle of the labor movements for justice and fair working conditions, introduced by Councilwoman Gimm.
Mr. Green?
Councilwoman Gimm.
Gimm, I'm sorry. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gimm.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and designating May sixth through May twelfth, two thousand sixteen, as Nurses Week in the City of Philadelphia to honor the critical work nurses do each day to care for the health and well-being of Philadelphians of all ages, introduced by Councilwoman Gimm.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Gimm.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Commerce and Economic Development Committee to hold public hearings on vertical farming, hydroponic farming, and aquaponic systems in Philadelphia, introduced by Councilman Taubinberger.
Chair recognizes Councilman Taubinberger.
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on the Environment to hold public hearings on urban agriculture in Philadelphia, introduced by Councilman Taubinberger.
Chair again recognizes Councilman Taubinberger.
I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it.
And a resolution authorizing Counsel's Committee on Parks Recreation and Cultural Affairs to hold public hearings for applicants seeking nomination to serve on the Commission on Parks and Recreation and further authorizing the committee to recommend for Counsel's consideration nominations to be forwarded to the mayor, introduced by Councilwoman Bass.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution recognizing and honoring Opera Philadelphia on their prestigious nomination as the best opera company at the two thousand sixteen International Opera Awards, introduced by Councilwoman Bass.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
And a resolution encouraging all Philadelphians to participate in the eleventh National Prescription Drug Takeback Day on April thirty, two thousand sixteen, as a means of preventing prescription drug abuse, introduced by Councilman O.
Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you. I move for the adoption of the resolution.
It's been moved in property second. All those in favor? Those opposed, eyes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. That concludes our calendar for today. Are there any speeches on the part of the minority? Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. I have distributed flyers on the council members' desks and would alert the public that this Saturday, April 30th, is the National Drug Return Day or Give Back Day, which can be done at your local police district. So if there are prescription medications, other type of medications, sitting in your cabinets, you can return them to your police districts. I would tie that in with tonight's community meeting at Maritime Academy Charter School at 2700 East Huntington Street, where we're going to have a community meeting where members of our neighborhoods in the River Ward can come and talk with us about their experiences, their suggestions, their complaints, frustrations regarding the heroin and opioid epidemic here in Philadelphia. That will be from 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. I would also just like to state that there's different opinions on this. We'd like to hear from everybody, in addition to which concerning the drug give back, we do have a member of our community, Bernie Strain, that is a friend to many of us in here, and Councilwoman Blondell Reynolds Brown introduced a resolution last time. Unfortunately, his son died from a overdose of opioids. This is not a case where someone was abusing heroin. He had burned his hand on a lawnmower, was prescribed Percocets, went to his girlfriend's home, and the mother fortunately at that time had a Percocet for him. He took it, did not feel pain relief, and unfortunately she gave him an additional pill, which was methadone. So he was an athlete, a person who was not a drug abuser, burned his hand, and unfortunately an additional pill. So we would encourage everyone, don't flush those pills down the toilet, just return them to your police stations, and that would be a good way for us to start addressing the prescription medications in our cabinets. Thank you very much, Council President.
Thank you, Councilmen. Speech on the half of the majority. The chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. On Tuesday, Philadelphians went to the polls en masse in turnout numbers higher than I've seen in quite some time since the Obama election. Those high turnouts turned, some people into winners, some people, and we congratulate all the winners, some of them did not win, and we thank them for moving into the public forum for debate. Makes us all better. One contest on Tuesday did not involve a candidate but a question, and it was the question number three, which involved the African American Males Commission being made a permanent agency. I'd like to inform all of you that 132,488 individuals said yes to that, which represented 63.5% of the vote, and I thank each and every one of them for doing that. And the reason that we should thank them is we had a recent trip to Grattisford where a lot of bad decisions in sequence accumulated into a bad outcome, which was incarceration. If we can start to undo some of those links in the chain, universal pre-K, making sure that people have as much employment as the city can find in its budget, we can begin to undo some of those bad individual decisions that create terrible outcomes. And I think this commission has, in the last administration, raised a lot of good questions, whether it was health concerns, diabetes, high blood pressure, single parent head of households, and violence. If they can now begin the work to come up with solutions, this city, not just African American males, but the entire population, will be better because of it. So I thank the voters who thought well enough of the commission to move it into permanency within the city government structure. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilmen. Congratulations on that strong vote. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, this is like aside from our elections, and we've all had to go through those, this has been a challenging week in the city of Philadelphia because we've lost some mighty giants, and Councilwoman Blondell Reynolds Brown did the resolution for Barbara Daniel Cox, and we all introduced a resolution for Mr. Sam Staten Senior. And I don't know about the rest of you, but over the past two weeks, it seemed like every time we turned around, someone, somewhere, I mean like nationally and here locally, like we lost folks, and we're in the midst of moving, and you really can't stop because you're going, you know, and it made me think about, particularly in the case of Mr. Staten, when Ozzy Davis gave the eulogy at Brother Malcolm's funeral, he closed by reminding the audience of what Malcolm was, particularly to the black community, and he ended the eulogy by referring to him as our prince, our shiny black prince. And when I think about Mr. Staten, to me, he was Philadelphia's mighty lion, particularly in the labor movement, and particularly for making sure that people of color, black people and black men got to the table. Each and every one of us in this room who are elected, I'm sure have a story to tell and to share about something he did to give. Mine quickly is that I was not a product biologically of a very wealthy family. I'm a product of very humble beginnings. When I decided to make the trek to run for office, I was Sherrell Parker, an employee in his body who just happened to meet some elected officials, and I went to Sam Staten Junior, Senior, because people told me to go and talk to him, and once he finds out what you're interested in doing, they say he will be with you. I was shaking, my hands were shaking, I was making this big ass to open up a campaign office because I needed that money, and he didn't say it was because of X, he didn't say it was because of Y. In essence, it was little black girl, I'm gonna find a way to help you, and I opened up my campaign office. I won't forget that. I know the city of Philadelphia won't forget what he did for black men, to give them an opportunity to stand upright, to earn a living, to be good fathers, to be good husbands and good providers. Kind, but stern. In this day and age where in this business you can't trust anybody because they'll tell you one thing, speak with a forked tongue, turn around and do something different. When he gave you his word, it was his bond. You didn't have to turn around and check and call him five times to ask him if he was still with you. He was still there. To Sam Junior, to all of the Staten children, to Ryan Boyer, to all of the laborers' family, our hearts and prayers are with you. Cheryl Lee, who was there with him and took care of him for many years, thank you all for sharing him with us and allowing him to touch us. The correspondence that they sent to each of us, and I just wanted to read it into the record, it notes that the viewing will be held on Thursday, April 28, 2016, from 5:00 p.m. until 8:00 p.m. at Laborers Local 332, 1310 Wallace Street, Philadelphia, PA 19123. The Janaza Funeral will be held on Friday, April 29, 2016, at 11:00 a.m. at the Philadelphia Masjid, located at 4700 Wild Loosen Avenue, Philadelphia, PA 19131. The repast will be held immediately following the Janaza at the Laborers Local 332, 1310 Wallace Street, Philadelphia, PA 19123. And in lieu of flowers, memorial donations may be made to the Friends of Labor. Attention Cheryl Lee, again at 1310 Wallace Street. Mr. President and colleagues, thank you so very much for your patience.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gim.
Thank you very much, Council President. This afternoon, we're having hearings on a serious issue that has been impacting many of our public schools and in our communities, and that's the issue of looking at youth who are experiencing homelessness in our city. We see no dramatic rise as our poverty in our city deepens. Our young people are the ones who can suffer the most significant consequences. But the most important thing is that I feel that something can be done about it, and that our working together with Councilwoman Blackwell especially, and Councilman Dom, can figure out some solutions that can make an impact right away. So invite all my colleagues to stay. It's at 1:00, and we look forward to a good hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Council President, and I just want to expand on my personal relationship with Mr. Sam Staten, you know, who recently just passed away. And, you know, when, you know, I've been in the labor movement for 26 years, and in my 26 years, I was business representative, political director for Local 98, and for 15 of those years, and, you know, I have been blessed to have known Mr. Staten on a personal level. And, you know, there are labor leaders, there are good labor leaders, there are great labor leaders, and Mr. Staten was a legendary labor leader, and he shaped the labor movement and what it is today. He personally, from a social and a right, doing the right thing, empowered communities to reentry into the workforce. He is responsible for the initial programs with DAP, and inclusionary programs in the city and into the trades, you know, with DAP, with PHA, with University of Penn, with, you know, with the Lucian Blackwell, you know, apprenticeship program, and many, many more. It all started with Mr. Staten, and he was the warmest and most generous man, all right, that I have met in the city of Philadelphia when it comes to people, from, you know, founding Sister, you know, Mary Muhammad School, and from his involvement in all the communities. And, you know, as, you know, Sherrell had mentioned his word, all right, once he said something, it was it. You don't have to second guess, you didn't have to ask any details. He was a man of his word, and he delivered, all right, to the best ability, all right, what he was sought out to do. So, you know, I want to, you know, thank him, all right, for a legendary career. He's a legendary man. He has the highest respect out of the labor movement here in the city of Philadelphia that everybody achieves to. He was truly the teacher of great labor leaders, and that's how we see him, and he surely will be missed, and his marks that he will leave behind is all in, you know, the mentoring that he has accomplished, you know, throughout the labor movement, especially with 332 and their extended families. So our hearts and prayers are going to go out, you know, to the Sam, to the Staten family, as well as the 332 family and the entire labor movement.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. Just to follow up on the comments of my colleagues in reference to the passing of Sam Staten Senior as well as Barbara Daniel Cox, they have been pillars in not only the city of Philadelphia, the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, but also throughout our nation, and so everyone's hearts and minds are with the family at this time of hong going. In addition, I wanted to thank Councilman Taubinberger for your advocacy earlier today in reference to urban farming as the grandson of an African American farmer who bought a farm in North Carolina in 1943. I'm glad you're trying to bring back that spirit of farming here in the city of Philadelphia and all the opportunities it can provide here in the city. Also, I'd like to thank Councilwoman Brown for her advocacy. She, last year, was an early advocate to Treasury in reference to making sure that we have prominent women of color, that being Harriet Tubman, and also other prominent Americans on future currency. And this initiative actually was prompted by a lawsuit by the American Council of the Blind to advocate for change to the nation's currency, which ultimately led, which was a successful lawsuit in 2008, which changed the future of our currency with a number of prominent Americans to be on our currency, including Harriet Tubman. So I want to thank Councilwoman Brown for her advocacy in that regard. And finally, as you know, April is Autism Awareness Month, and as we conclude this month, I provide some information on the desks of all members of council that let us know about the impact of autism in your council districts. We have almost 25,000 people in the city of Philadelphia living with autism. In just a six-year time period, we had 116% increase of autism here in the city of Philadelphia. It's going to be an impact that's going to have a profound effect throughout our council districts, throughout our city, and to the lives, and I'm sure you have someone that you know in your church synagogue or a close family member has been touched by this learning difference. So I just wanted to remind people of the impact throughout the city of Philadelphia, and although April's coming to a close, it's something that we'll be dealing with every day. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President. I want to also echo the sentiments of my colleagues regarding the passing of Sister Barbara Daniel Cox, as well as Mr. Sam Staten Senior. And I think all of us have had a relationship with him that really expounded beyond politics, but as public servants, and particularly his work within the labor movement, he has significantly helped to move this city forward, but also improved the quality of lives of African Americans and all Philadelphians. And so I want to also just express my condolences to the Sam Staten family, as well as members of the labor movement, particularly Local Laborers Local 332, but also members of the labor movement as a whole. I want to make a brief announcement regarding two events that are taking place in my district this weekend. As a part of National Prescription Drug Take Back, National Prescription Drug Take Back Your Drug Day on this Saturday, April 30, we will be partnering with Sheriff Jill Williams at the Point Breeze Pharmacy, located on 13, okay, on the 1300 block of Point Breeze Avenue with Sheriff Jill Williams, Point Breeze Pharmacy. We'll be working with individuals who will be taking back their prescription drugs, and also we will be having a tangled title on property taxes workshop on Saturday, April 30, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Dixon House, and that's a significant workshop because we want to make sure that long-term residents in a very changing community such as Point Breeze, Grace Ferry, have the opportunity to come out and learn about all of the resources that we provide to helping people stay inside their homes. And so again, that's going to be Saturday, April 30, 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at the Dixon House located in South Philadelphia. And also just want to inform not only my constituents but residents throughout the city of Philadelphia regarding a extension on the Long Time Owners Occupants Program Open Enrollment Period, which now will be extended until February 2017, and Councilman Squilla and myself worked very hard on that extension to allow long-term residents the opportunity to take advantage of this tax relief. And so surely if we're going to be supportive of new development through tax abatements, we can be supportive of long-term residents, making sure they take advantage of the Long Time Owners Occupants Program. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President. Sam Staten Senior and Barbara Daniels Cox, I did not want to repeat what was said, but I reflected on my own personal interaction with them. And when it comes to both of them, what they have in common, if you were to look up a urban dictionary Webster and put strong black man, strong black woman, and look for a picture, it would be their respective pictures next to each. When I first met Sam Staten Senior, I was taken in, we were running for a political office, and by the description of him, I thought I was going in- and by the description of him, I thought I was going in to see a 6'5", 250-pound guy. And when they brought me in the side door, up through, I was being escorted through the channels, if you've ever been in that office, you get lost coming in there. And they brought me in, and it was like, "Now, stand here, don't move, and then we're going to bring you in." And he was sitting behind the desk, just as relaxed, and he let me do my pitch. And then after, he looked at his folk, Tony, it was Tony Lewis, and he said, "Okay." Okay, not even two words. And everything was done and taken care of. And you're right, Sherrell, you ain't have to look back after that because you had his full-fledged support. Similarly, with Barbara Daniel Cox, I was a young, new director of the Minority Business Enterprise Council, and she was the chair. So in that time, there was a lot more conflict between majority contractors and minority contractors and female contractors in the city. And you could be besieged by all sides, by people smacking you in the head because of the controversy of the issue. When I went into those board meetings, all I had to do was sit behind Barbara Daniel Cox, and she handled each and every aspect. And I must confess to you, Mr. President, it's difficult walking on the playground, dealing with the bullies, and the toughest kid on the block is your big sister. She handled things so that we could make a difference. And so I'm truly appreciative to both of those individuals, but what I'm encouraged by is that they've trained good people to replace them. And we should all take that lesson, to always have somebody that you're mentoring to be able to take your place, because we too shall pass. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Blackwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me say that I'm blessed. Lucian Blackwell got a Sammy Award, and I always admired it and always wished I had one. Well, last year, colleagues, I got a Sammy. I got a Sammy Award. So we are so honored for the long, wonderful relationship we've had with Local 332 and everything everyone has said about Mr. Staton, Sr. He was a sweet man, a good man, a kind man. He cared about everyone. He was the kind of person, if you could carry him on your shoulders, as his family and members did, you would be happy to do so. Wonderful man. It was an honor for me. And again, if you want to see what a Sammy looks like, come to 411, and it's right there. Let me also say, Barbara Daniels Cox went to college with my sister and I, you know, you all know I'm Janie from Chaney, from our affair. And she, we honored her last year. You all know about our work with the African community, the Mayor's Commission on African and Caribbean Immigrant Affairs, and Echoes of Africa. Barbara Daniels Cox is a person everybody knows. She serviced everyone. We were so happy to honor her last year because for all that she does for our community and for all communities, she had never been honored. So we were very, very pleased to try to give her her due and give her her quote-unquote "flowers" while she could smell them. We love Barbara Daniels, and whenever I saw, we'd always ask, you know, you've known someone all your life, you always ask about people, they see that you don't. So we always caught up on folks from the old school. And she was just a wonderful, giving person. And we are so happy to be part of this honor, to honor her again. And let me say, we all know that Billy Paul passed, too. And Billy Paul knew the late and great Lucian Blackwell from the waterfront. So this is one of those, this is one of those weeks where we knew everyone. And certainly, I'm going to get the police commissioner, I meant to get his son's number and call him yesterday. So one of his sons was involved with that water, see, I haven't mentioned it in a long time, with the water main break on North 52nd Street. I've been good. So one of his sons was involved with that. I promised I wouldn't. When you get tired of hearing yourself say something, you know people are really, really tired of it. So the commissioner's namesake son was on that block, too, when we had that water main break. So you know we have his number. And certainly, we'll tell him how we feel, and certainly how I feel. So, you know, sometimes it's like that, but, you know, the older you get, the more you do know everyone. And we are just privileged to have known all of these wonderful people and who have been able to share their lives, and we thank them for lives of service. And finally, let me say that, and I'm not saying this because I got my award today, but Sherrell Parker is sponsoring a Delta Sigma Theta luncheon, sorority luncheon in the caucus room. So, yeah, you see that, Ashim? So we want to thank her and the sorority, and certainly remind everyone that that luncheon is across the hall for us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Dom.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to give a little positive news, and that is that I recently read that the Urban Land Institute was here about two weeks ago in Philadelphia. And they called the Navy Yard, which is in Councilman Johnson's district, and PIDC, I guess, runs it, I want to give them both a shout-out, they called it one of the most successful master plan redevelopments in U.S. history, in U.S. history. Kind of amazing thinking where we came from a yard that was closed with no jobs in 1995 to today, over $1 billion of investment and 12,000 jobs. And I think the lesson here is that we can create more Navy Yard-type employment opportunities across the city, it'll help all of us. So I think it's a great thing, and I'd like to just call that to our attention. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Council. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Yes, I just want to follow up and thank Councilman Dom for acknowledging the great work taking place down in the Navy Yard, in the great Second Councilmatic District. But also, as we move forward in the Philadelphia Navy Yard and working with PIDC and Liberty Property Trust, I think it's only going to continue to be great as long as their process is inclusive, and we're making sure that, as the more they do development and building down in the Navy Yard, it's an inclusive process, and people have the opportunity to participate in all of the professional services contracts, as well as the development taking place regarding the construction jobs available in the Philadelphia Navy Yard. Thank you very much, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. I look forward to you making sure that that happens. Before I call for emotional adjournment, I'm going to break the rule, I only abuse this, and I'm not supposed to speak up here. But real quickly, the individuals that have transitioned, Barbara and Billy Paul, you know, have a little special affinity. Barbara's recently did a lot of good work for us on an avenue that are off North Broad. She was the consultant to make sure that we got that thing up and running, because as you all know, she's real good, as Councilman Jones referenced, about ensuring that all the details are handled and we're up and running on the Avenue of North Renaissance. Billy Paul, we actually honored him two years ago at the Strawberry Mansion Annual Festival. Yeah, now you were out there, and we gave him a nice honor because he was a really good guy that came from North Philadelphia, and he gave a little hit about me and Mrs. Jones and teased the people with two verses, then shut it down. So a lot of disappointed people. And Sam Staton, Sr. is actually a person that, again, his office, the headquarters, is in North Philadelphia. And I was thinking about my first interaction with Sam Staton, it was actually my first year as a councilperson. And I was a newly-minted councilperson, and I came in, and lo and behold, the first thing that we had to deal with was the stadiums. And those of you who are around or remember that, how challenging that was. And my first level of detailed interaction was, he was lighting me up on the phone because I was holding out on my vote for the stadium. And I, you know, he called me up, he said, "This is Sam." I'm like, "Okay," you know, I picked the phone, "You don't understand?" "Well, you don't understand," you know? And I was, you know, a new guy, and no, you know? And it ended up pretty bad on the phone, and ultimately, the stadiums happened. But what he did, he called me up after the vote. He said, "I want to take you on a little ride." And, Curtis, you talked about his people, you know, he had this 6'5" perspective, but he was a small person in stature, but you still had that sense of who he was. So he got me, and he came, picked me up, got me in this big Cadillac, and he drove me up to Exton, Pennsylvania, where the training facility was. And we're driving, anybody had ever had to go to Exton or near Exton, it's a long way. So the more we're driving, and we're getting out in farmland, and I'm not saying anything, and I'm telling you, I'm getting nervous. All right, I'm saying, I'm thinking about TV, right, when he take you way out. I mean, you know, he's a laborer, right? He was, you know, he got a lot of shovels around, right? I'm like, "Man." And I'm being honest, I was quite nervous because it seemed like the trip never ended. But when we finally reached our destination, we got out and I saw the laborers' facility, training facility out next to Exton, Pennsylvania, and I was amazed. And he explained to me that what he was talking about wasn't just a job, it was an opportunity, it was a career. And I got a different perspective on what it was like to be involved in labor and unions and all of the organized activity that they had. We went around, I was quite impressed. And I'm happy to say that, as of four days ago, there was an agreement signed between Temple University and the laborers, all of the laborers' union, where they will be moving the Exton Training Facility to North Broad Street. So I'm just, you know, while I'm extremely sad, like we all are, about losing him, his memory will live on in that facility that will provide support. So with that, sorry for breaking the rules. I think you all probably give me a pass on this one. With this, I'd like to recognize Councilwoman Reynolds Brown.
Mr. President, I too am a beneficiary of Barbara Daniel Cox's wise counsel, in that we might remember that she was the first executive director of the Mayor's Commission for Women under Mayor W. Wilson Good. So when my office proceeded to do our homework and research, Barbara was always in the wings, a quiet soldier, offering counsel on how to best get this done in the last administration. So I am eternally grateful for who she was and what she meant to me and my career. With regards to Sam Staton, while we know he was a giant and indeed a legend, and left a huge footprint in the labor community, he also made a difference in housing. In 1983, one of the first proposals I wrote at Philadelphia OIC was with Sam Staton, Sr., who sat at the table with me and guided us in how we could ensure a funded project by the Fed, federal government, Department of Housing. And so, not knowing then the giant of his personality, I've learned that he was about fairness across the board, in labor for sure, but across the board when it came to what scripture might say, "The least of these." So we're lucky if our lives were touched by these two citizens, and I'm grateful to have known them both. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and recognize you again for a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that council stand adjourned until Thursday, May 5, 2016, at 10:00 AM.
We want to probably second the council stand adjourned until Thursday, May 5, 2016, 10:00 AM. All those in favor say aye. Thumbs opposed, eyes noted, and the motion carries. Thank you all very much.